WCRB FM 99.5 HD1 Lowell, Boston. WGBHF M HD2, Boston. WCAIF M HD2 Woods Hole. WJMF FM HD1 Smithfield, Providence. And at classical WCRB.org. It's six o'clock and probably 50 degrees here in Boston. Coming up to start us this hour, we have Baccarini's Fourth Symphony with Johannes Maritzki. And...
Good evening, everyone. Welcome to planning board for Monday, April 25th. Any public comment? Yes, sir. If you could step forward to the microphone and just state your name and address for the record, please.
For planning board meetings. So I'm not sure exactly how you run it. Is it the similar to a school committee where you have public comment regarding the agenda items first?
Well, if you could just state your name and address for the record.
Sure.
And then...
I believe it's here for a public hearing.
Okay. Are you here for the public hearing for the board warrant articles?
Correct.
Okay. So we'll ask for a public comment during that agenda item, which is second on our list. So if you'd like, you can wait till then.
Sure.
Okay.
That'd be fine.
Thank you. Any other public comment? All right. Our first appointment is for 939 Northfield Road, which is an A and R plan.
Good evening. I'm Stan Dillis from Dillis and Roy. This, what you have before you is an A and R plan that corrects a zoning problem. They built the house at, on lot, I think it's lot three, 3B. And they didn't beat the 175-foot width. So we've created two parcels. Parcel A, which will become part of lot 3B, and parcel B, which will become part of lot 2B. Both those lots already exist with a slightly different shape.
Okay. So essentially, you're just exchanging that 252 square feet for the 7,000 in the back so that the house has 175 feet of width.
It needs a 175-foot lot width.
Okay. Questions from anyone on the board?
No, just a comment. I appreciate you bringing this forward. I mean, you probably were forced to by the building inspector.
Yeah. I mean, I wasn't forced to.
We appreciate it nonetheless.
But this is, this is an example of construction tolerances, probably, right? They're too close to the road, didn't have the width.
They just built it a little too far back.
Yeah.
Oh, from Northfield Road, right.
Because up in the front of the lot, they have lot width.
Right. They didn't put the house where they were supposed to, essentially.
Yep. The Harretts stand too late.
Yeah, we weren't involved.
Yeah, that's what I mean.
We get called in after the fact.
I don't see any issues with it. I mean, it's pretty simple, straightforward, doesn't involve frontage, and is just looking to resolve the zoning issues.
I don't have a problem with it.
Okay. Entertain a motion to approve the A and R for 939 and 915 Northfield Road.
Still moved.
915?
And 939.
Yep. Okay. Okay. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Thank you.
All set, stand. Thank you. All right. Our next appointment is public hearing for board warrant articles. Mr. Allison, would you like to do the honors of...
Sure. Thank you. Town of Lunenburg Public Hearing. Lunenburg Planning Board will hold a public hearing on April 11, 2022, 6:05 PM, Town Hall, 17 Main Street, Lunenburg, Mass. To make alterations to the code of the Town of Lunenburg, Mass., Chapter 250, Zoning, Article 4, Use Regulations, Section 250, 4.15, Non-Medical Marijuana Establishments, Subsection K1, to Section 250, 4.9, Water Supply Protection District, to Article 3, Establishment of Districts, Section 250, 3.2, Location of Districts, and to update the zoning map to reflect the new boundaries of the aquifer protection zones. Materials are available for viewing at the Planning Office, 960 Mass Ave, Lunenburg.
Excellent. Okay. Welcome, Mr. Torgensen. Why don't we start with the Water Supply Protection District articles?
Yep.
Welcome.
Welcome. So the Mass DEP recommended that we upgrade our protection bylaws.
Just your name.
Oh, Fran McNamara, Lunenburg Water District.
Thank you.
You want me to keep going?
Yes.
Okay.
Please.
All right. So this all started when we were anticipating supplying water to the Town of Lancaster. Mass DEP set a requirement on us to find a redundant source on the assumption that Keatingwell was offline. So we were looking to upgrade one of our wells. Due to that upgrade, this, that promoted this change in the, the map of the protection areas. The Lancaster project has pretty much fallen apart. It's not going to happen, but we still thought it'd be a great idea to, you know, increase the capacity of current sources on Lancaster Ave. It's just one well where increase the capacity. And it's actually not really much, it's not really an increase in the capacity. If we run the well at its original capacity, the water quality is very poor. So this is more of an upgrade to, to get the quantity back with a decent water quality. So the map that is proposed, slight little jog out along Kilburn Street, and that's a little, like a little bootleg kind of thing sticking out. The rest of the map stayed the same.
And you've got the map up, Adam.
I do. It's the goose on the potato.
Okay.
It affects the houses on the southern...
We're highly technical this evening. With goose and potatoes.
But it's, it's everything from this property line over. So it's this and this.
Okay.
Which is...
It affects the...
Can you blow that up at all? Just...
It affects the houses on the southern side of Kilburn Street and the Violet Farm. This is all swamp through here, going up into fields, and then this is fields and farm area. Then these homes, all, I think, each of these lots is already developed residentially and has been since, I believe, probably like the 70s for most of them. Because most of them are the similar style Leclerc house that they built in that area. The majority of them, I think, are two families.
So the redistricting affects that area, but the regulations applies to the entire...
Going forward, it applies to all of the, the zones, yes.
Okay.
And so now it's a zoning bylaw, so as with all zoning bylaws, there's no retroactive
But some of the use, but some of the uses are, are being eliminated.
Correct. But that, if that use exists, it's a pre-existing non-conforming use.
Well...
And if going forward, it is discontinued, then it becomes unable to be used. But if it's currently happening, zoning can't require it to cease.
Well, if a use, so for example, if you look at number C under, B, district delineate, sorry, C, Use Regulations, and you look under number two, and you look at B, C, Outdoor Recreation, Nature Study, and the words "with prior DEP approval" are being added, and boating and fishing are being, being eliminated. To me, that's an enormous concern.
Those are in the zone one.
Okay. I understand that, but you're eliminating boating and fishing in that zone.
The zone one is...
Right around the wells.
These circles around the wells on the water district property. So...
Okay. Can you show me the, the zone one on Hickory Hills, please?
I'm trying to. It's, it's really hard to do because there's a lag.
Okay.
So this W here.
Yeah.
This dotted line that goes around it.
Yeah.
Is the zone one.
Mm-hmm.
So for these wells, there's no water in zone one?
No, because they're underground, they're, they're...
They're taking aquifer out of the ground.
So these are, the, so the zone one is often 500 feet within the wellhead.
Four hundred.
Four hundred. Oh, sorry.
Four hundred-foot radius around the well.
Okay. Can you, so you've shown those ones. Can you move to the rest of them?
Well, the only, the only place the zone one exists is around a wellhead.
I understand that. I'm wondering what the zone one delineation is around the Hickory Hills well.
Or 100 feet around the well.
Okay. Well, does that include part of the lake, is my question?
Yes.
Okay. Well, that would be...
It shows on the lake, but I don't, I don't think DEP enforces the actual lake. They usually draw the, the boundary as the border of the land.
Well, the elimination of boating and fishing is going to be a problem because that is an area of the lake, obviously, that is utilized. So that is of concern to me. See, it's a very large area of the lake, actually.
So, so...
It's an existing, it's an existing use that happens there currently and hasn't been abandoned. So going forward, it would continue to be a pre-existing non-conforming use until anyone and everyone stopped doing such on the lake.
So...
I'm not sure that's correct.
Zoning cannot be, cannot be retroactively enforced. So that land has been and is used recreationally and for fishing, going back to the 50s when they flooded it.
Mm-hmm.
So I, I mean, it would be...
If it wasn't a use, I wouldn't have as, as big a problem. I understand structures, et cetera, because if they're not there, but I think when you get to a use, it gets a little bit more gray. And that's a concern to me.
And enforcement for this comes through the building department and is appealable through the zoning board of appeals.
Mm-hmm.
And so should a building commissioner choose to enforce, the zoning board can overturn that enforcement. On...
Can, doesn't mean they will.
It doesn't mean they will, but generally, the zoning board is going to be folks who have been and are involved in town and understand the history. And there's the opportunity for the presentation of facts of the continuing use going back 70 years at this point, and that length only getting longer as time goes forward.
Okay. I'm hearing you. I'm happy about it, but I'm hearing you.
Again, you know, there are so many pre-existing non-conforming things within this community that it's not an uncommon situation where we have pre-existing non-conforming structures that are non-compliant, that are continually altered, added to, sold, because...
I completely understand that, Adam. I completely understand that. The problem that I'm having is with a use that isn't necessarily documented anywhere. It's not a grandfathering. It's, it's, well, I guess it would be a grandfathering.
It is.
But, but unlike zoning, where you can say, "I purchased this lot," and you can point to a deed and said, "This was a conforming use, and I, the time period hasn't elapsed since the zoning changed, so therefore I'm grandfathered." This, this is a whole different situation.
Well, in the case of Hickory Hills, though, I think you have a much stronger argument because you have a landowners association. You collect fees, you issue boat stickers, you have a board of directors, you have all of that structure.
Correct. You have past history.
It's not as if somebody owns the entire lake, lands their float plane out there, and has no record of anybody using the land. I mean, you have a stack of receipts for people that buy boat passes every year, or rent slips, or, you know, board of director meetings.
Because there's an entire, basically, marina within that zone.
Mm-hmm. Yep.
That's pre-existing.
Yep.
For all the Woodlands properties.
So we, we might have specific paperwork from DEP that doesn't do the lake.
Okay.
Takes the lake off of that radius. When we put that well in, we were only required to get the 400-foot radius on the land.
Right.
So within the Woodland property, we own and control, no, we don't own. We have a very restrictive, we could stop people from walking on if we want to.
Right.
So we're very restrictive there, but it stopped at the, the lake border. It never went into the lake. So I'm not sure, but I think, I think we have paperwork that says the lake is not part of that, but it does show it. It does show it.
If you can check on that?
Yeah. I'll check. Yep. But it, but it does show it, so I understand your concern. It'd be nice if it, it just went to the board.
Yeah. If it just went around, you know, my concern is exactly that.
Right.
Is this map that we have here what will be approved at town meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And that's, that's already been approved. That map is already approved, other than that little leg on Kilburn Street. It's the exact same map.
Okay. All right. So the only changes that were made to the map are on Kilburn?
Correct. And the wording that she's, she's referring to.
The wording is what I'm concerned. You're eliminating uses that are existing.
And I think what I'd like to do is go back to the area on Kilburn Street where the map is being altered and address that part of things because the map is its own article. And if anybody has any questions, concerns, questions, comments for just the map.
And the map is tied to actually both articles.
It's tied to both. Because it's the use regulations within the zone.
The regulations in the bylaw reference the map.
Right.
So they incorporate it into the bylaw by date?
Okay.
Yeah. So they're really...
I'm just trying to focus the conversation, that's all.
Yep. So I have additional concerns regarding this because I've gotten calls from people. The other call that I've had is about horse paths. And if I'm hearing you correctly, and I've tried to find it, and I'll be honest, I haven't gone through it with a fine-tooth comb, but the only elimination of horse paths is in the zone one?
That was my understanding.
Do you, do you know that, Fran?
I don't know the exact wording of what was in the zone one.
Because it talks about in zone two, C is permitted.
In zone, in zone three, it is permitted.
And in zone two, it's permitted.
So it would only be within the zone one.
That's, okay. I just want to confirm that.
And the zone one is, is always the most restrictive.
I, I'm aware. So I've had a number of people that call me, have called me about the horses, but I wasn't aware it was only in zone one.
So just to clarify, the Keating's well currently exists on the approved map?
It, it is on the 2009 map referenced, for whatever reason. That is not what's shown on the, the zoning map. So regardless of what happens at town meeting, we'll be making sure that we get the appropriate map linked to the zoning map.
Very good. Make sure we've got all of our parcel IDs correct.
Mm-hmm. Yes, we're going through a whole thing with that right now.
Can you go back to the Kilburn Street area? Because farming, gardening, nursery, conservation, so where is the, so there's no zone one in that area?
There is not, well, there, no, not on, not on Kilburn Street.
There's pre-existing zone ones for the existing wells, but nothing, and none of those restrictions will apply.
The zone two is what gets expanded on Kilburn Street.
Okay.
So this parcel here, where the hand is, is where Mr. Violet put the barn up a few years ago. And the, the, the two barns exist with the slope of trees and the fields up behind it.
Okay.
And this parcel here is a majority swamp. It's the swamp on the, the right side of Kilburn Street when you turn onto it.
Yeah.
That washed out about eight years ago from Beaver Dam and blew out the Culver Crossing that got to the backfields at, at the Violet Farm.
Okay.
And so a majority of that goose is open swamp water, the, the body of it here. So in, in the zone two, the major changes to the language are the, are E. The use involves a manufacturing, storage, transportation, disposal of toxic or hazardous material, or generates, treats, stores, or disposes of hazardous material as defined in Article 2, in quantities exceeding, used to say 250 gallons total, or 2,000 total pounds of solid material at any one time. And now it will say 220 total gallons of liquid material, or 2,000 pounds of solid material per month. So it's taking at one time, which could be every day, and, and changing it to a month and lowering the liquid quantities. And then under six, C, it adds sewage treatment facilities or sludge and septic storage. I don't believe any of those properties are storing sludge or septic.
And septic storage, that doesn't mean a septic system.
No.
That means...
No, that means like you're pumping it and having a holding tank or treating it or...
Okay.
And we don't have any of those facilities in town anyway.
What about a tight tank? That doesn't qualify?
No. That's the same as a septic tank.
Okay. Okay.
And it's, it's in such a small quantity that it's being removed quarterly in most instances.
The DEP controlled large septics in town aren't storage, aren't considered that?
Maybe they are sewage treatment facilities, but...
And the Woodlands, I don't know where the treatment plant is in relationship to that zone one.
Oh, it's outside the zone one.
That's outside the zone one? Okay.
But it may be in the zone two.
Wow. Okay. And this is one two.
But they do exist.
They do exist.
And they were permitted, and the town's aware of them. So even if at the time that they were installed, they violated this bylaw, they've been in place for more than 10 years, actually, more than six years, with the knowledge of town officials, so thus they become equivalent to a pre-existing non-conforming or permitted use.
Okay.
Sewage treatment facility was on there already, so that's not even a new thing.
Yep. Yep. I'm confused about, because C, D, E, F, the one we were just looking at.
Mm-hmm.
And then the next page seems like something's cut off.
Yeah.
It does.
G and H are missing. Because I was trying to figure out the, the first part of that sentence on the next page, and it's not there.
Well, it goes five, six, four.
Oh, the pages just stay for one minute?
But it's on the opposite side of the screen.
I'm just wondering if they go with another... Well, you know what? If you look at page two, it goes from H, under, under Use Regulations, number two, A.
Yeah, I think this page is inverted.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. That would rewrite.
G, H, L.
Okay, so...
So this is just on the...
Yeah. That page is flipped backwards. Page numbers, please?
Yeah. Moving forward, if you can do page numbers.
I've asked for that for years. And then dates and revisions.
Oh, that makes more sense.
Dates and revisions.
Yep.
Documents.
So in zone two, can you just show the zone two again? Are there any undeveloped parcels?
In all of zone two?
Yeah. Well, I'm just, because this is changing to... They're changing the percentage of impervious area from 15, from 20% to 15%.
That's correct.
Or 2,500 square feet, whichever is greater.
So if you have a very small parcel, you can get up to 2,500. If you have a large parcel, it becomes 15%.
Right.
So, yes, I'm sure there, in all of zone two, there are absolutely undeveloped parcels. That, that's, I have no doubt about that.
And it does have the provision that unless a system for artificial recharge, so they could put in a raid garden or a detention base on it.
And just to be inclusive, on an 80,000-square-foot parcel, which is what most of our parcels are in town, 15% is 16,000 square feet of impervious.
Impervious. Okay. Thank you.
Which is a goodly bit.
Yeah.
No, that's not right.
That can't be right.
No, because 15,000...
Can't be right.
That's not what I want. It should be 12,000. Yes, that's what it is. But still, 12,000 is...
And that's only changes it for new dwellings, not existing?
That's correct.
Okay.
And again, pre-existing non-conforming, everything that's there exists. It can't be retroactively required to meet the bylaw. This is like some of the lots that we see that are half an acre, that are buildable by right because when they were created, they met the zoning requirements at the time.
Okay.
And it's my understanding all of these regulation changes have come directly from DEP? Is that right?
They are at the recommendation of DEP. The bylaw, Mr. McNamara's consultant actually did the proposed alterations to the bylaw to conform to DEP's regulations. Because the...
But just so we're clear, this isn't something that...
Yeah, I mean, we're not making this up. This isn't something that we just decided would be good things to do. And...
A question. Has DEP confirmed that this would be adequate? This would suffice their requirement?
I don't believe it's actually passed through them. The, the person we were dealing with no longer works there. So this was, we had a big kink in the, in the communication part, so it was, uh...
I've dealt with DEP.
It was very difficult getting to speak to anybody. So, uh, so yeah, this has not been officially approved.
Okay. And have the well upgrades been done, or is this anticipation?
No, we're still in the, we're still in the working stages. We're doing, uh, we did, we did pump tests on it, 15-day pump tests, and the water quality turned unacceptable. So we relocated some of the wells, so we're in the process of doing another pump test on new wells.
Okay.
We're, we're anticipating that event, these wells are going to work out okay, and we'll eventually have a new source that we could use.
Okay. Now, is the withdrawal approved by DEP? Save those tests? Or are they waiting for the tests to come back good after the 15 days?
No, they, they actually approved the, the well that we, we rejected the water quality. So they actually approved the capacity, and the capacity is 291 gallons a minute. The existing well, because of water quality, only pumps 75 right now, so it'll be a huge improvement to us. But, uh, so the permit is, is in draft stage right now for review, and eventually it'll, it'll be coming along.
Okay. Any other questions or concerns from the board?
The only question that I have additionally out is, um... I don't know where I am now because I'm... But when it talks about mining of land, "In no case shall earth removal extend to a depth within four feet of groundwater table." Are the Board of Selectmen aware of that?
Uh, they have seen the bylaw. They did review it.
Okay.
They, I think, chose to defer to town meeting for presentation, but they are aware that it's in there.
Okay.
I'm pretty sure that was already brought up to be sure that they were made aware of that.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Okay. Okay. One additional question. Can amendments be made to a bylaw on the floor?
Yeah.
Okay.
I guess my only question along those lines is where we're putting this forward to satisfy DEP. to satisfy DEP. I mean, they have no ability to control what passes on the town meeting floor.
That's correct. Nor does, nor does the Water District for that, for that matter. And, I mean, I think that if the town is making demonstrable efforts to comply and work with the Water District, I can't imagine that DEP would punish them for actions of individual citizens at a town meeting where, I mean, we can't stop people from making amendments or voting for it.
Yep.
Correct.
Okay. If we don't have any other questions or concerns, I'd like to invite the member of the public to come up and, sir, if you don't mind coming forward.
Welcome.
Thanks. Name's Darrell Plant. I live at 490 Lancaster Ave. On the map, and this is my biggest concern right now, it does actually change a little bit on my property. It does come in another, I don't know, five, maybe 10 feet on my property. As it goes up Lancaster Ave.
My property is just north of Mr. Violet, right here.
Right, I'm sorry, I can't see it.
Trying to move the cursor.
Can you, yeah, can you...
You see the black cursor kind of...
Yeah, kind of hanging out there?
Yeah, that's, that's Mr. Plant's property.
Yeah. So it does come in, it used to, the older map, it just kind of ticked my corner of my lot. Now it comes in quite a bit, but that's either here or there, as far as I'm concerned. I'm more concerned about process, actually. And there are quite a few property owners, actually, not just myself, that's affected by this. And my question is, I have three questions, but the first one is, why weren't we notified that this change was happening?
Good question.
And a hearing done, possibly, so that we could have public comment. I read through, I read through the article. There's a lot of things you can do, there's a lot of things you can't do. Not going through every single line item, but as soon as you start telling me or another owners what you can and cannot do, you're infringing on property rights. Whether it's for the general good or not, doesn't really matter. So that's one question. I don't know if you want me to tick off all three, but if you want to address that one, why wasn't a public hearing done specific to this issue?
You're at the public hearing.
We weren't notified. I had to do my own legwork. I know this was brought up last year. I went and spoke to Adam about it a week ago.
Well, this is, I mean, this hearing went through the same advertising process that any public hearing that any board in town does, and that is advertise it in the paper.
I think he's, I think he's talking about notification as an affected resident kind of thing?
Yes, yes, just, I mean...
That would have been really difficult, because everybody in town, basically...
Yeah, I mean, everybody who it touches has some potential effect by the change in the bylaws.
Yeah. Yes, true, but some more than others, you would admit.
Well, but then you're asking for us to make a value judgment on who's worthy of notification and who isn't, and what the level of that impact could be on one person versus another, and then, so it's either everybody who is in one of these districts is notified, or we follow the general laws requirements for zoning change, which is what we've done.
That may be the case, but I feel, I think a greater effort should have been made to bring the property owners in, to say, listen, this is, this is what's happening, okay? This is how you're going to be affected. And I don't see that effort being made. Yes, maybe you met legal requirements, but that's not getting buy-in from the community, as far as I'm concerned. Certainly not from me.
Additionally to his point, I can, I can see a valid argument for having notified everybody in the expanded Zone Two area.
I'm, I'm not going to say that that isn't a potential benefit. What I would say, though, is if we notify these folks, and we make the effort to notify the eight or 10 property owners who are affected, and somebody who is in the Zone Two on the other side of town gets wind of it and says, well, but I know I'm concerned, why didn't you notify me?
You've always been in the Zone Two, that's why you didn't get notified. That's a valid answer.
But the change is still affecting them in a way, because the uses are being altered, however minimally. Again, we're going to a value judgment on who is worthy of being notified, and, and I'm, I'm not ready to make that judgment. If the board wants to create a value judgment system where they choose whom and how we notify folks above and beyond the legal requirement, then that's something that you can choose to do.
Okay.
But I think that it's, it's an, it's, it's an exercise that's going to have a wider-reaching deleterious effect on the way people view zoning changes, because if we are picking and choosing who's notified based on what the perceived or potential impact is, someone is going to have a valid case at some point of why they should have been notified and warranted.
So you're giving us reason not to go above and beyond the minimum required?
I'm giving you reasons why I see a lot of potential issues with changing what the legal requirements are and going above them in a way that potentially creates an imbalance in notification and the way people may perceive the way that changes are being done.
I got you, and I love your wordsmithing, but can you please just answer the question? You're saying...
I'm, yes, I'm giving you reasons why I think going above the legal requirement is problematic.
Okay, very good.
And at the end of the day, it is not Mr. Bernie's responsibility to do this.
Of course.
So if you feel adamantly that the planning board needs to increase the amount of communication going out, then that's something we can discuss as a board, but the hearing was advertised. In this particular case, the warrant went out as well, and so these, it went out via townwide mailing. So literally every resident in town received a copy of these regs. Now, I don't know that the warrant reflects the hearing, but at least people are...
No, it doesn't. It doesn't, but...
But at least people are aware of it.
But the warrant was received, I think I got mine Wednesday or Thursday?
Yeah, I checked the mail on Saturday, and I had it.
And so if someone had seen it and ran a flag up, they still had the opportunity to attend this hearing, so...
Okay. Was there any discussion for compensating affected property owners? This is, obviously, you're looking to enhance the amount of water the town gets, and it benefits the entire town, of course, having additional supplies and protecting those supplies. However, and as you do this, you are adversely affecting property rights for some people. Was there any discussion for compensation for that?
Well, first and foremost, these regs are coming from DEP through the Water District. So this isn't, it's a zoning article, so the planning board is responsible for moving that forward. I can't ever think of a case where a municipality has compensated somebody for a change in zoning. The whole point behind zoning is to protect people's property values. So while you, in particular, may be, as you see it, negatively impacted by these changes, any member of the Water District who drinks Lunenburg water sees these types of changes as supporting their property values, in that it is supporting their water supply. So I think to try to compensate people for these sort of changes would be very, very difficult.
I just want to reiterate the point. These regulations were not drafted by the planning board.
That's fair.
They're, they're from the Water District, and the planning board is moving them forward, because that's the process. And I don't know if the Water District had any comment.
Well, just because they came from somewhere else, doesn't make you not responsible for them. You're entirely responsible for them, because you're putting it forward. So, right?
No, I would disagree with you, but go ahead. I don't think that we are responsible for them. I think that we are the vehicle by which, but we have had no input into the regulations. They came from DEP in the Water District.
I agree with that.
And ultimately, they would be approved at town meeting, and at that point, they're approved by the legislative body of this community. And at that point, I would say it's the town's responsibility.
Well, I, I, I still think that when you do diminish property rights for the benefit of the entire community, and don't compensate for that in some fashion, that's a problem. That's, I'm not a lawyer, but that's how I see it.
And I guess to that, if you felt your property rights were diminished, then the value of them changes, and you could apply for an abatement through the assessing, through the Board of Assessors, who would be responsible for valuing the property.
That doesn't...
As opposed to cash payments to individual property owners.
Yeah, I don't want to get too far in the weeds there. I just don't, there was no consideration for compensation. That's basically, you've answered that question. Much of the additional protected space in Zone Two is farmland, which is exempt from this by law. They use fertilizers, they use pesticides. Many of the people that live on Kilburn, is it Kilburn?
Yeah, it's Kilburn.
I would expect they all fertilize their lawns. Uses that you don't want to, that are in the bylaw, says you're not, you're not supposed to do. I don't think that falls under pre-existing uses.
In Zone Two, it is allowed.
They're, and further on, I believe it is not. The storage and use.
It, if you look at, at least if I'm reading it right, if you look at Section C, Number E, it says...
Three E.
Three, sorry, Three E, farming, gardening, nursery, conservation, forestry, harvesting, and grazing as provided under Master Law, Chapter 40A, provided that fertilizers, herbicides, pesticides, manure, hazardous materials, liquid petroleum products, and other leachable materials are stored within an enclosed structure and used in a manner that will not permit groundwater contamination. So they're not prohibited.
Used not to, not to create groundwater contamination, though. I mean, it, I mean, it's an apple orchard, they're spraying right now. They're...
If they, if they do it within the guidelines of state law and within pesticides application, the application of pesticides are regulated.
That, you know what, I agree with you. But you're expanding the map, creating greater restriction on property owners. All these property owners are probably using all these things that you don't want them to use, so what's the point of redrawing the map?
They are allowed to use them. I mean, it says right here, they...
I know, but the essence of what we're trying to do here is protect water supply.
It's not us saying we don't want people, you keep saying you don't want them to use. We're passing on rules provided by DEP through the Water District to protect the town. We are not saying we don't want people fertilizing their lawns. This doesn't even say people can't fertilize their lawns. What's the complaint?
I, I felt as though I did read it in there.
Okay, could you please...
I'd have to go through it.
I have, I have a copy. You're welcome to take mine, because if it is there, I do want to hear it, and I do want to address this. I'm not trying to be combative. But by the same token, if it's not, I don't want to say we read it and then it's not there. I'm happy to give you my copy, so you can check for it.
Okay, fair enough. Well...
If you'd like it.
Yeah, not right now.
Okay.
I just thought that the essence of the entire, of this project is to protect the groundwater supply.
It is to protect the groundwater supply.
It seems rather counterintuitive, when we know that all these things are going into the groundwater.
But farming is permitted, and the application of pesticides and herbicides is permitted. Obviously, it's within the guidelines of the application. So if someone were to, you know, douse an entire field with bags of fertilizer, that would be a problem. But if they're applying them in accordance with a particular, a normal farming practice, it wouldn't.
Yeah. And, and the map in and of itself does provide some protections on the pesticide end of things, because I'm a licensed pesticide applicator, and so I'm familiar with the regs that govern the use of pesticides. And I can tell you that many products, especially in Massachusetts, primarily due to the fact that we have the Cape, and the Cape has, it's essentially mostly sand down there, so the ability to leach a product through to groundwater is very high. Massachusetts is very aggressive about the way they restrict products, so even though this regulation may say that you can use this, use pesticides in general, when it comes to a specific product, many of them will end up on a restricted use list, and that label for that particular product will say cannot be applied in a Zone One, could not be applied in a Zone Two area. And so you can drill down further, and generally say pesticides are okay, but this group here is not.
Fair enough. Okay. All right. Oh, and one, one small question, concerning how the line, the Zone Two line, does run through a portion of my property. Does the bylaw merely only, if I wish to cross that line, does it affect the lot in which I might be trying to create? Or it only affects that little bit down front where there, a drive is going through, let's say?
So you've got property on both sides of the little property.
Yes.
No, I'm trying to understand where the property is.
So he's got just a little dogleg that goes around a...
It's this property here. See, there's this little one in the inlet of it, and it's got a 40-some-odd-foot frontage here, and it comes up and around, and has, it's the property with the stump snowman out front on Lancaster.
Stump snowman.
Okay.
Did you use to land the plane in the field?
Was it?
The plane in the field? You remember the plane used to land and take off in the field up?
I've only been here for five years, yeah. But I do know that, I knew, my neighbor told me that.
Yeah, no, you would only be affected in the area that's within that Zone Two.
That's the only thing that's regulated by the Zone Two. And you would only be impacted by the percent impervious for that portion if it were impacted at all. So because you have such a small swath, you would be subject under that to the 2,500 square feet, as opposed to the 15%, if 2,500 were larger than the 15%.
Would that be...
Just in that section.
It's governed by the lot size.
Just in that section, just in that little...
But, yeah, but he only has so much lot size in the district. So it would go to the lot within the district.
Okay.
Because he has a zone line going through.
The portion of the lot or the whole lot?
So only the portion of the lot in the Zone Two is governed by the Zone Two.
That's what I thought.
So you'd have to figure out what that lot size were, and then you would determine if it was 15% or 2,500 square feet.
Yeah.
Yeah, which, just looking at the screen, if, knowing it's 40 feet wide, it looks like it may be 60 feet deep, not scaling it off, so...
I mean, it's not, it's not an immense piece of property.
You may be in a case where you can alter 2,500 square feet of a 2,400-square-foot swath that's affecting you.
Okay.
Do you understand what I'm saying?
I kind of do, I mean, as long as it's...
Essentially, it...
And it's not even altered, it's create impervious.
Yeah.
So it's probably something that isn't an issue if you only have 2,400 square feet, because you're not going to make the whole thing impervious, because you can't by other bylaws that we have. We require setbacks for driveways and other things.
Yeah, I just want, I just want to be clear that it's, it only affects the area that's inside the line.
Yeah.
And outside the line. If that's the case, then it shouldn't be an issue for me. Okay, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from any member of the board? Mr. Torgensen still with us? I believe so.
Yes, he is.
Do you have anything to add, Mr. Torgensen?
He's remote.
Yeah, no, I don't have anything else to add. I thought that you guys handled that pretty well.
All right, thank you. So I think we're all set with the two Water District articles.
Well, so that's, essentially, we just talked about the Water Supply Protection District bylaw, which is the... which is the language changes. The other is the change to Section 253.2, which changes the date of the zoning map to that of town meeting, which would incorporate the map from the Water Supply Protection District should that pass. Should it not pass, I would expect we would pass this over, because there's no need to change the map to include something that wasn't approved.
I don't have anything.
Is that necessarily true? I mean, the delineation is the delineation. Whether or not the regulations are approved, the delineation remains. Is that not true?
Yeah, it's made by the modeling of the aquifer, I would think.
So the map could stand alone without the regulations passing. But it wouldn't make DEP happy. That's the thing.
Well, but we're... I, I, you're correct, but then what would have to happen is they would have to go through and strike all of the amendments in here, save the map reference, because the map reference would also need to be changed within the bylaw. Because the bylaw specifically references the map and date.
I get you.
So that, and that's, again, if, if that were something that was a concern to people, it's something that could be done, it would be really an, a really awkward way to go about doing floor amendment, but, I mean, I guess I've seen stranger things happen.
So my only comment, and I'm sure you guys already guessed it, is I continue to be concerned about the striking of boating and fishing within the Zone One, and I'm also concerned that there's two Zone Ones. There's a Zone One that's just on land for the Hickory Hills well, and now there's a Zone One that extends into, into the lake.
And we'll wait for Fran to answer about the land versus the lake, and I'll, I'll speak to Attorney Costa at office hours on Wednesday about the impact of boating, fishing, and recreation within that Zone One waterway as a pre-existing non-conforming use.
As it stands right now, I would personally, as a citizen, ask that that be changed. So I can't support it as written. So just, I support everything else, but just that is, that issue.
Would it make sense to get the building commissioner's interpretation of that, since ultimately he would be the?
I mean, I certainly can.
Because from an enforcement standpoint, it really starts with him.
I think the-
No, I don't think so.
Well, it does, because he's the interpreter of zoning. The reason I would look for legal advice, or thought that that would make the, the bigger impact, is if the building commissioner decided to leave next week, or in five years, we get another building commissioner, he interprets things differently. If we have-
I was saying both.
Yeah, and I'll do both, but I mean, if it's, if it's something that needs that legal opinion to be, for someone to be comfortable, perhaps it could be written, and we would have a legal opinion on file-
I think that would certainly help.
That would, that would go to future building commissioners that would say, look, we have this, and they could, they would have a starting place as opposed to just changing interpretation with each different view of it.
I think that would certainly help. I mean, there's over 500 homes in the Hickory Hills community, and I think this is going to be a big concern.
It would be up to the, up to council whether or not he was willing and able to write an opinion that-
Right, right.
That leaned that way, but-
Yeah.
It's, it's something I can speak to him about.
We still have to go over our article for marijuana establishments, but I think at this point, we're in good shape in terms of the Water District stuff. So you guys are all set.
Aren't they separate hearings?
It's all one hearing.
It's all one hearing. It's on the articles.
I read it, of course, yeah.
You can, you can vote on each article individually, if that would have an impact on how folks vote.
I think-
Because you're going to have to, you're going to have to report, you're going to have to vote on them individually, individually anyway, because the quantum requires us to-
You're good.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
So do, do we have to make a?
You don't have to do it now. You, yeah, you have to make a recommendation.
We do?
Yes.
Why can't we defer it? Everybody else defers it till town meeting.
But you still have to make a recommendation before, even if it's at town meeting, you have to make a recommendation.
I mean, you have to close your hearing, and there should be an outcome to the hearing. If you want to set up a meeting before town meeting to finalize any information and vote on any articles, you certainly are welcome to do that as well.
How many boards that make recommendations at town meeting? Is it just FinCom and, and the Select Board?
Generally, yeah.
Okay.
And I would say, in the interest of just making town meeting move smoothly, it makes a lot more sense if we can provide a recommendation that is well organized so that-
Yeah, and I get, I mean, you can do it prior to town meeting. I think it-
The difference is, we don't participate in town meeting as a board throughout the meeting.
Not in the same way that the Select Board does.
So it's very difficult for the moderator to call on the planning board when we're all, hopefully all sitting in the audience. So I would like to vote and make a recommendation on each article this evening, so that it goes to town meeting and is ready to go. And whether we want to do them, do the two Water District articles now and get that out of the way, or if we want to discuss marijuana, then I don't know.
I think it makes sense to do the two first.
Okay. Do we know the article numbers?
Uh, I, you know, I do, I don't have the warrant on me. I can find them. Give me a second.
Okay.
It's on the webpage.
That's where I was going. Why is this doing this? Because I shut that off. Okay. I think it's 27, 28, and 29.
Okay, so marijuana is?
I believe marijuana's first. It's not up there.
Do you maybe want to ask a member of the public which one, or if they want to speak about one rather than not the other? So they have to sit through?
They already spoke.
Okay.
Did you say it's up on the webpage?
Yeah, it's on the, um, front of the webpage, yeah.
Where?
Are you waiting to speak on another article that we're putting forth? Okay.
Um, hold on a minute. I'm going to go back to it.
Well, in the meantime, we can discuss the marijuana article, which is pretty simple and straightforward. This was-
On the homepage, it says town meet, town meetings and town finances.
It's, the 2022 is not there.
Oh, I read it. We, I know I read it.
Oh, really?
Yeah. Town meeting warrants. Yeah, click on town. Oh, it's not there. It was there.
I'm glad I'm not crazy.
No, it was there, because I looked at it before I got it at home.
Maybe they took it off when they sent it out.
Maybe. Why would they do that?
Yeah, that doesn't make any sense.
Right. Why would they do a lot of things?
So in terms of the marijuana article, this just clarifies the permitting process, so that there's no potential for misunderstandings in terms of the process that an applicant would go through. And this was prepared by town council?
Yes, it was.
Okay. Does anybody have any comments or anything to add?
Okay, it's not under that. Click on, I'm sorry, click on Fiscal 23, Town Meeting and Warrants on that same page.
Okay.
Go down past Marshall Park.
Under Town Meetings, Finances?
Under News and Announcements.
Oh.
It's underneath the Marshall Park one. I knew I read it. It says FY 23 Budget and Annual Town Meeting.
Found it.
Hold on, you got it?
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I don't have any discussion on the marijuana article.
No, do I. This is one, this is the one I didn't really feel we needed, but yeah, it's better.
We've seen it before.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I have a question, just more of curiosity, which is, um-
Sorry, it's 26, 27, 28.
Which is, uh, I, I trust town council, if they say we need it, I believe we need it. But I'm curious if this is in reaction to anything that's happened, or if it's proactive.
This is reactive.
Reactive.
Well, it's reactively proactive.
So-
Excellent.
Yes.
Local government work.
So Ullam Flowers signed a host community agreement with the Select Board in November, early December, to place a cannabis dispensary at the current Donlaze Pub-
Yep.
On Summer Street. And in doing so, their attorney came to this board and said, hey, read your bylaw. I think it says we don't need a preliminary license to file for our special permit. We have this license in Pepperell, and we're about to open in a week or two. Can we use that to, as sort of like a placeholder, but I don't think we need it anyway? And so the board said, we'll accept that, because the idea is we want to know that we're dealing with a viable entity from the Cannabis Control Commission perspective. And having been licensed creates the understanding that you're not just kicking tires, and that you can actually, you have the funding and the background to be able to pass the, the licensing process. But the legal opinion of their counsel caused some concern in the way he felt that the language read. So we took it to town council, and he said, I, he doesn't concede that that opinion is correct. And he believes that the language that exists does what the board said it does, but offered to draft the alteration to further tidy that requirement.
And data is reactively proactive.
Well, the proactive part is that we've only got two licenses to issue.
Yeah.
Good. And they actually haven't made application regardless?
No, um, they're actually waiting for the election, so I expect to see them in the next month or so. What they didn't want to do was start the process, lose a vote, and be bound by four members. So-
I get you.
The-
This, this group?
Yeah.
They're still going to lose a vote.
That's, yeah, unfortunately, that's a challenge with-
Well, I mean-
A special permit.
In theory, someone could get elected.
Yeah, they, they've still got one strike. Well, never mind. Move point. Move point.
Any other discussion on Article 26, the marijuana article? All right. So at this point, I think we're prepared to close the hearing. Sir, you don't have anything else you want to add? Okay.
I would make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Aye for myself and Mr. Torgensen.
He said aye.
Okay.
Aye.
Excellent. So-
Make recommendations on the articles now?
What's that?
No, we closed the hearing.
Just close the hearing.
Yep.
Thank you. Good call. Better asking than not.
So are we going to make recommendations on the articles?
I think we should.
Okay, what is the first article?
26 is non-medical marijuana.
I would make a motion to recommend approval of Article 26.
Second?
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Roll call, please. Aye. And Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
All roll call, or?
Yeah, well, I'm sorry, we'll do roll call, just so we can call out Mr. Torgensen, because he's-
It, it just makes everything a little cleaner.
Yeah, for the minute, so, for, yeah. So for the next one.
So 27 is the language of 4.9, the Water Supply Protection District.
So those are the regs?
Yes.
Okay.
I move that we recommend the Water Supply Protection District revisions.
I would second.
All those in favor by a roll call vote. Mr. Torgensen? Mr. Torgensen?
Aye. Sorry, I want to unmute.
Yeah, that's all right. Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Nay.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
And then 28 would be the change to the zoning map under 3.2.
All right.
I move that we recommend approval of the change of the zoning map.
Second?
All those in favor by roll call vote. Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Nay.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent. All right, moving on to decisions, we have two to review and endorse.
Good night.
Thank you for coming.
So you get to sign twice on this one, Mr. Cole. This is the decision for Powell, uh, oh, wait.
780 Northfield Road, right? This is Jim and Allison Latanzi, right?
Yeah.
Yep. And then you'll have to deliberate and vote on Powell's.
Powell's. The only thing, only question I had on this one was, I thought during that hearing, we discussed the rock staying and being added to the wall, like on either side.
I brought that up, but I don't know, like, as a statement, I don't know that it got incorporated at all.
Okay.
On 780 Northfield Road?
Yeah.
My motion was to approve it as presented.
Okay. I don't know if you presented that.
Was the reconception part of it is asked in a barre pen?
Yep.
And this is?
This is the 780.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And then that leaves Powell, which is a closed hearing that you were waiting for a decision to deliberate and, excuse me, motion on.
In this one, we had a couple of conditions that we were unsure on, but I think they remedied all of that by doing the soil testing ahead of time.
Uh, there are yes and no. There are a couple of conditions. I actually have to pull this decision up. Construction hours need to be voted on, and we pulled a condition that required them to install the, uh-
Erosion.
Stormwater systems prior to construction, because they're going to build the building, then they're going to demo the old building, and then they're going to do the remainder of that work.
Yeah.
The board felt that based on the, the circumstances, that, that they were going to need to do it that way. Or at least conceded that their, their request to do so was reasonable.
So if it's just construction hours, I would recommend, you know, whatever the most, the most lenient, because that is in the industrial zone, is it not?
Yes.
When the only, there's two special conditions. And there's two special conditions, dust control measures and a final plan for water.
Correct, and they're gonna need the final plan for water before they install it anyway, for the water district.
So, I think the hours in there are fine, seven to five, Monday through Friday, and eight to three Saturday, with no construction on any Sunday or state or federal holiday. So, I would make a motion to approve the stormwater permit. Well, we've approved it, so what do we...
No, you have not approved it.
Oh, we haven't?
Did not approve.
Okay.
This is roll call, it's in yellow.
Has to be filled in, okay.
I would, I would make a motion to approve the stormwater permit for PSG Realty 225 to 259 LLC at 133 Lemmonster Shirley Road.
And site plan approval.
And site plan approval.
Second?
All those in favor, roll call vote, Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Abstain.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for myself.
Just a point of clarity, Mr. Torgensen's able to vote on that?
I believe so.
Yeah.
Because he was...
He was here for those.
He wasn't crossed out on them.
No.
I was gonna say, Marjorie's really good about making sure that if somebody can't vote, that she crosses them out.
Very good.
All right, moving on to minutes approval.
I would make a motion to approve the minutes of March 28th, 22, the regular minutes, the minutes of March 28th for 225 and 259 Lemmonster Shirley Road, and the minutes of 328 for 780 Northfield Road.
Second?
All those in favor, Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And an aye for myself. Excellent, moving on to committee reports. Lunenburg Municipal Design Committee.
Well, I think we were gonna meet last Monday, but it was a holiday, so we have not met since our last meeting.
Okay. The agcom.
Agcom, last week, we didn't have a quorum, but we did call a joint meeting with the Stormwater Task Force, mostly because of the membership, not because of the group, to hear a discussion, a lecture from Janet Morrison, she's a conservation lawyer. There's a new way for farming in ag land to be protected, other than the APR, which is the Agricultural Preservation Restriction. And she described all the different ways and means about it. It involves a 50% grant from the feds, and it needs to be matched by a 50%, which can be entirely funded through grants available, competitive grants, but nonetheless, the benefit to this is it's lacking two major pieces that the APR requires, is the first one is the First Right of Refusal by the town, there is no First Right of Refusal involved in this new process, and the second one is the requirement to sell at, to sell at ag value, that that requirement doesn't exist either. More to come, more to learn, not very clear on this, we have a handful of parcels that have been recommended that would be eligible for this, and there are discussions in the works with those landowners, and potentially identifying other parcels. It's, that was the brunt of the, unfortunately, the agcom didn't have a quorum, so we didn't call the meeting, but the Stormwater Task Force heard that lecture, and then we called the meeting at like 7:30 and discussed the lecture, they showed up halfway through.
Okay.
So, that was the meat and potatoes of that last meeting.
All right. And that's Stormwater Task Force, I'm guessing, too.
They will have a report, but they left the Ritter Building to come here to have a meeting with CEI, which is the consultant.
We, I was gonna say, we met with the consultant and ran through the bulk of their, the work that they're doing, where they are, and what they think would be reasonable progress moving forward. I mean, the heart of it was the consultant going over with the board the things that they had done, and answering some of the questions they had relative to the work that they had done, and progress going forward on groundwork for a potential stormwater enterprise fund.
All right. Open space.
Haven't had a meeting.
Okay. Capital Planning Committee.
Haven't had a meeting.
All right. Economic Development Committee, which...
We have not met since the last time this board met, we meet Thursday. There is a survey live on the Economic Development Committee's website. There was a press release in Friday's paper, there will be one in this coming Friday's paper, which is a townwide edition. So, folks who, it's targeted towards business owners, there's a mailing that will be going out to those who are on the assessors' roles as business owners, which will be, again, the press release with the information on how to access the survey. And what the Economic Development Committee is trying to do is set a baseline for what people in the business community think of the town as a place to do business, to try and identify where they, as a group, feel they'll be the most impactful in making changes, to then try and implement some of those recommendations through boards and committees, and to go back and survey again in 24 to 36 months to identify what, if any, impact those changes had on perception.
All right.
And they'll be meeting with the Lunenburg Business Association on Thursday to discuss how they can work together to forward each other's agenda.
Excellent. MRPC and MJTC, we are waiting until election time.
Yeah, I think that makes the most sense at this point.
All right. Director's items, one view comments.
So, I get to make more people unhappy. The state has issued site approval to Mr. O'Brien up on Howard Street. I don't know that there's anyone in this room that is shocked by that statement. So, now it's kind of a waiting game for Mr. O'Brien to compile and submit his comprehensive permit. Upon doing so, the zoning board will check it for completeness, and will request comment from all other boards and committees within 45 days of filing, in order to be prepared for their initial hearing. So, it, I mean, there's nothing to discuss, because there's nothing filed right now. So, I mean, any comment that this board has has already been stated, because it's all speculative until final plans are submitted. The town will be retaining a review engineer to do the work, will be working with town council to review the submission. You know, all of this, you know, all of this is, is pretty meat and potatoes until the filing is made, and then it, you know, we go straight into, you know, ludicrous speed to try and get reviews and comments, and the town's official position back to then slog through whatever public hearings come from that.
Public hearings at the state level, or?
No, public hearings at the local level, through the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, the comprehensive permit application is made directly through the Zoning Board of Appeals, and at, at that, at that time, it's filed with them, they control the process, they're essentially the singular approving authority for a comprehensive permit, and then they make their decision, their decision is appealable to the Housing Advisory Committee, who, the, will generally turn over the town, and then the town has the opportunity to appeal that to the court system, and then we get into the whole Appeals Court, Supreme Judicial Court, et cetera, that we did with Hollis Hills. Is it Hollis Hills, is that what it was?
Yep, it was Hollis.
I, I hear Hollis Hills, and I think of the farm, so I get, like...
No, it was...
And I know, I know it was on Hollis Road, and, and it is a big hill over there, so it all makes sense, but...
Speaking of Hollis Hills, I've got something to say about that in the comments, public comment.
All right.
About the comp permit?
Yeah.
Okay.
Still advertising it.
Well, I guess we wait and see.
Yeah, I mean, that, that's really where we're at, you know, we've all dealt with Mr. O'Brien, he is not, he's not rash, and is not going to spend money he doesn't see value in spending. So, I would expect he has not laid out significant fiduciary expenses into planned development while waiting for that approval. I have a feeling the second that that landed in his inbox, he was pushing his engineer to get the work done, but it's a significant project, it's a significant amount of engineering and architectural development, and it wouldn't shock me to see this dropped Thanksgiving week, just kind of based on the way things have been happening. But, you know, I would, I would say we're six and, six to nine months of actual engineering, and maybe I'm wrong, but that would be my guess.
I was just gonna say, maybe the packet will come tomorrow, who knows?
Well, yeah, we really don't know, but...
We don't know.
Well, we won't be in receipt of it, so...
My educated guess is, is we're like six months away, if, you know, if he hasn't been already spending the money on it.
All right, meeting.
I do have something to say, I guess through, through you, of course, on this comment, is, has there been any discussion or action or expression of interest in what we've discussed previously at two or three meetings about trying to preempt sewer and water going down Electric Ave, where it does not currently exist? Not Electric Ave, Chase Road.
Chase Road. Interest from?
The Sewer Commission, the town manager, the board of select, the select board, conservation, anybody?
I think the Sewer Commission might be willing to entertain it, I think the Sewer Commission is in favor of working with people willing to do development, I don't know that they want to use sewer as a tool for development, but if we want to talk about, you're talking about zoning change to absorb the impacts...
Talking about talking about with other groups, and not just us, and, and, and their charter says not to encourage or discourage, residential or commercial, so, development, period. So, that kind of puts them in Switzerland, is that how you say it?
Yep.
Well, I think the challenge is, especially on the sewer aspect of things, is that we don't have a clear picture of what that's gonna look like in terms of, is this gonna be a privately owned line, a public line? Is the map, the sewer service area, gonna get redrawn, or, you know, there's a lot of unknowns there, and...
And I'll be honest, the Sewer Commissioner's at the same unknowns right now.
And I think my read on the situation in general is folks are going to be tentative to have any sort of in-depth, thoughtful, public conversations regarding the impacts of those development, until they have an idea of what that might be. And I'm not saying after approval, I'm saying until they understand what the proposal is, because...
We already know what it is, they're talking about running water and sewer down to that lot on Holman, Holman Street.
Howard Street, you were right.
Howard Street, and, and it's gonna go from Beale Street to that spot, there's no doubt about it. Okay, so what we need to get together, instead of being reactive to everything in this town forever, we need to, we have some knowns right now that are different than we had last week. It's known that this is gonna happen, that this is gonna get forced through. So, we have to ask ourselves, as a group, as a collective, with everybody talking to everybody else, what if, what, what if this, then, and then come up with some possible things, is my opinion. And I'm pretty sure I'm not the only person that has opinionated that way. I think that we need to stop being proactive on things that we know are going to change.
Well, if the board would like, I can reach out and try and organize...
Again, through you.
Some, some sort of, some sort of meeting or, or discussion to, to talk about that.
I mean, we've, we've gone down that road a couple of times with trying to collaborate with other boards, and it, it never seems to come to fruition, but I certainly understand your frustration, Mr. Allison, and I share a lot of those same concerns. You know, unfortunately, a project of this magnitude has unintended consequences that come along with it. And I think it would be valuable to sit down and have a discussion specifically with the Sewer Commissioners, and also the select board.
I mean, I won't be on the, on the board, but I don't see why the planning board couldn't extend that invitation to the board.
If the board would like, I can, I can extend that.
I would very much be in favor of that, I, I live with a bit of fear that we wait till we have all the info, and then we are under an intense time crunch, and then we can't act.
Yep.
Yep.
None of that, we've got a whole bunch more stuff on the plate at the same time.
Yes.
Well, I'll extend the invitation, if that's the board's pleasure.
And I would suggest the water district as well, because I don't think water goes down there, does it?
No, no, it does not.
Well...
They're in, the frontage of Howard Street is in the district, as are the homes along Howard Street, the land in the back is not.
But water doesn't go there.
But water does not go there.
Oh, the plan was...
When the, when the district map was drawn, those parcels, the first couple hundred feet of their lot depth was included in the district, but it was never, the infrastructure was never built up.
Correct.
So, he could essentially bring water from Beale Street all the way up to the front of those lots.
But he couldn't put it into the lot.
But he couldn't go in far enough to develop a significant project like this. So, on the water end of things, there's, you know, it's, it's much closer to being plausible.
There's question as to whether or not the comp permit would have industry over another governmental entity, but that's...
I say, we still don't have an answer on that?
Well, our attorney's opinion is that they don't, but obviously, that's gonna be the contention. I mean, the letter, the comment letter that we sent stated that, that, you know, that authority lies with, with the water district and after the legislature, but how it's gonna play out is unknown.
I was gonna say, I believe the water district has their own attorney, who has their own opinion, that they're waiting for what the proposal is before they issue.
But they wrote a letter with very similar concerns.
Very good.
So, Mr. Bernie, if you could reach out to...
Yeah, I'll reach out to the select board, Sewer Commission, Water District, and the town manager.
And Conservation, I thought you said.
Well, anybody, it's not just me, I mean, does anybody think, I'm not, I certainly can't think of everything.
I think those are the key boards, but...
I mean, do you want to include Board of Health?
Do we need to, I mean, do they...
No, I'm, I'm asking you what, what you, I mean, they, they...
I mean, they have no power over sewer and water being run down in the municipal utilities.
Correct.
Right, so then, no, probably.
And as much as you want to include as many people as possible, you also make for a less productive meeting for all the more people you have in the room, so if we can try to focus it as much as possible, I think that makes sense.
I understand that we had and we have not a DPW director, so maybe it would, I, I don't know what the situation with that's gonna be, but...
Your guess is as good as mine.
Another two or three months, probably?
I, I would hope not. But I guess we'll have to wait and see.
All right.
Thank you.
Our meeting schedule, 6:00 PM at Town Hall, May 7th, we have town meeting, 9:00 AM at the middle high school.
Do we want a pre-meeting meeting?
I don't think we need one.
I don't think, I, again, I don't wanna not ask and not post it and have it...
No, and, and he's, he's gun-shy from, because, from before. Because from before, it was traditional that we would post a meeting and not have it if we didn't need it.
That's... I just... I'm going to ask every time. Even though we generally don't use them, I just want to make sure that someone isn't feeling like they need it.
Yep. And then we have May 9th and May 23rd, we have three public hearings. Two public hearings. Two public hearings.
Two, yeah. And the Fallula Road project is in Lunenburg, but it's not in Lunenburg. So it fronts on Crawford Street and Airport Road, and it crosses the town line at the rear of the project. So there is work in Lunenburg with the impacts all out in Fitchburg. So if you look that up and you're like, how is this working? It's a split... It's a split community project.
Yep.
That...
We did an A&R for that.
No. Uh... Was it that one? I thought we did an A&R for a different one.
Something similar to that.
I thought it was that one.
I think it was that one where...
Okay, it might have been. I mean, there was a project where there was a violation, and I thought that the Redevelopment Authority sold them a piece of land, and that was on Fallula Road. This is a different project.
Okay, all right.
Same, like same area, like a couple of parcels down, but you can't leave. We have signing to do.
All right. Ongoing items.
Zoning for MBTA communities. We're filling out the paperwork for that. We talked about the second one and...
What do you mean, filling out paperwork?
There's a form that needs to be filled out and submitted by May 2nd.
Form saying what?
That we will... We're intending to comply.
Why would we do that?
Because it gets us another year of, or two years of being eligible.
I have... Personally, I don't think we should have any intention of complying.
Nor do I.
Well, it doesn't commit us to anything. The Select Board...
Of course it commits us if we're saying we intend to comply.
Well, the Select Board voted to move forward with completing that paperwork. It says we're going to explore the issue and we're going to move forward with working on...
We're going to keep an open mind.
Yeah.
Even though we may find that it's not a good fit.
We'll get back to you.
Yes. More or less.
On the topic of that whole MBTA thing, I saw a headline last night, and then I tried to go back through my feed to find it again, and I couldn't.
It was in The Globe.
Oh.
It was Communities... It was something like Communities Are Angry With The MBTA.
There was an implication of resistance of some sort. And I didn't know if that was more organized between communities, if that was more litigious in nature, and if we were looking to join in on such things, if it were.
I don't think it's...
Part of the piece of resistance.
I don't think it's litigious. I think it's more, the comment period ended. I think a lot of the RPAs and I think a lot of the communities were like, what are you doing?
Regional Planning Agency.
Why... Yeah, sorry. Why are we doing this? What do you... What do you think communities are going to be able to do with this? And I think even some of the more urban MBTA communities are frustrated because what's happening is the property values in and around MBTA stations are skyrocketing, and it's not having the intended impact that people hoped for because the people who maybe most need that public transportation aren't able to access it because they're being priced out. So it's really...
Unintended consequences.
Yeah, exactly. There's a lot of... There's a lot of pushback about this.
Well, given the angst that the communities are feeling and that honestly, I think me certainly as a citizen here is feeling, I am very confused as to why we would say that we intend to comply. And I would wonder how many other communities are submitting something saying that they are intending to comply.
I think most of the communities are filling out the information form and returning it.
Well, as a follow-on to that, our own Regional Planning Association was involved in a response letter, right?
Their response letter was great.
Okay, so how does us saying, yeah, we're going to comply, we'll bend over, how does that support them?
Exactly. Exactly.
That I don't know. And again...
I'll tell you that. It doesn't.
Well, I don't think it's a commitment to anything other than buying the town time to assess the situation and how they can do it.
And this is done by the Select Board and not the Planning Board?
Well, the Town Manager is the one who needs to sign that sheet.
Okay, but this is a... I guess I'm just confused. This is a planning issue because it's density of housing and yet...
It's zoning.
And zoning. So why would the selectmen have made the decision and voted without input from the Planning Board? This is a zoning matter and it affects housing density. So I'm very confused why we were not in the loop. And when we started this conversation, you said it's a letter that we intend to comply. And now I'm hearing it's just a packet of information.
They call it a letter of compliance. Where is it?
Quite frankly, I'm frustrated that the selectmen would have voted on this without any input or even talking with the Planning Board.
Apparently, my internet connection is unstable.
Well, it's... I just don't understand. I mean, and, you know, I completely agree completely with Matt. You know, the MRPC wrote a very strong letter and talked about the impacts to communities and that I wholeheartedly agreed with. And to now send a packet in saying that, you know, filling out the paperwork saying, yes, we're going to consider this, yes, we intend to do this, completely flies in the face of the letter that all of us supported.
It's like town bodies voting against other town bodies.
So, I mean, this is the form.
Can you go back up to the top? What's it headed?
MBTA Community Information Form.
Okay, Community Information Form is very different than Intent To Comply.
Well, not only that, but we just agree that we are.
Please complete the MBT Community Information Form to satisfy the how-to-comply-for-2022 requirements related to 40A Section 3A, sometimes referred to as MBTA communities.
I think that our contention is that we're not an MBTA community.
Exactly.
So filling out the stupid data form saying, yeah, we are, and here's our data.
Well, we are by definition of that law.
Yep.
We're a adjacent community. By their definition.
Can you scroll down? Is that...
Yeah, I mean, this is really the salient point. By not completing this form, this information request, we would lose access to MassWorks, Housing Choice, and local projects funding and local capital projects.
But my understanding was that the Town Manager was, and you, were in the process of identifying with MRPC what the financial impact of that would be.
We are, and that's a more nebulous process than is done by May 1st or May 2nd.
Well...
But filling this out is saying that we will comply, is it not?
What are you signing? What's the signature section? Because this is just a questionnaire about the community.
It does seem like there's some questions, like...
There's questions on how. In accordance with how issued December 15th, you required to hold a briefing draft guidelines, Select Board's city. You know, have you done the things you were supposed to do? What's the time and date of that meeting?
Well, wait a minute. Go back up to that. What is it that they were supposed to do?
Hold a briefing on the... With the Select Board, which we did. I presented the guidelines to the Select Board.
Which is kind of interesting that it's a zoning issue and...
Yeah, I don't understand, but anyway, go ahead.
Yeah. Please tell us if any technical assistance you might ask for, sources you prefer, any other information.
I strongly object to filling this out.
And then it needs to be signed by the Town Manager.
And what is it that they're saying? What is... I can't read that from here.
It says, "I am the CEO. I attest that I will submit parcel update to MassGIS," which we don't have to do, which we've already done.
What else does it say there?
"In accordance to MassGIS, your municipality," but we... We're not in that. They have our up-to-date information. This is just what form we would take, technical assistance in, what kind of technical assistance. This is if you have a district that meets the guidelines or not. Links to zoning bylaws. It's an information page, but they call it a... I forget what they called it.
Well, the heading is Community Information.
Yes.
And if it's strictly Community Information rather than an intent to comply, then I don't have as big a problem with it. But, and I guess that's why I would have loved to see this form, to see what it says.
I'll send it to you right now.
Thank you.
I do agree with Mrs. Bertram and Mr. Allison's point, though, that if you are going to contest something, it seems like you're undermining your position by providing information to move the process forward, whatever the case may be. But...
I would argue that there is something to be said about doing, if necessary, doing the legal dance. And we know that legal processes often don't follow common sense as we'd understand them.
Well, from experience, too. I mean, we... This is an unfunded mandate. There's no doubt about it. There's no carrot here. This is a stick.
Yep.
Right?
Big old stick.
Just like the MS4. Yes. Okay, so...
It's actually probably more impactful.
Okay, so the MS4 got a coalition of a whole bunch of regional groups to sue, right? That put us off another year and a half or two for the... So it's not unlikely that that might garner the same interest.
Yeah.
Well, at this point, maybe if we are successful in bringing together the workshop, we can put this on the agenda as well. Right? All right. Board comments and concerns. Mr. Allison?
Oh, yeah, just about the... I just wanted to confirm that the Hollis Hills 40B application has expired.
It has.
Mm-hmm.
It was valid March or April of 2016 with a three-year shelf life.
Okay, so is there... I mean, not that anybody really cares, but they're still advertising it on Realty listings as a viable project for $2.5 million?
Yep.
So is that legal? They know...
I'm not a real estate agent or attorney, so I don't know.
I guess I just got what I needed to confirm the fact that it is expired and I can find out for myself.
Yeah, and my understanding is that that property is all in tax title.
It is.
Well, all the more reason to be bending the law. Yes, right?
And I know that the Open Space Committee, or no Conservation...
No, it was Open Space.
Those Open Space has asked the Select Board to retain it.
We've asked them... They were going to put the foreclosure up for sale. And that process is someone buys the foreclosure and then tries to get the back taxes, but then they retain whoever... You know, they retain the property. And we did not want the tax lien auctioned off. So the selectmen have held off on auctioning the lien.
Okay. Any other board comments or concerns?
My wife will be having her baby in about 10 days, so I'll be out for a couple weeks here.
Well, thank you for giving us a heads up and congratulations.
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 Appreciate it.
Any public comment? I don't think we have any members. All right. Well, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
All those in favor, Mr. Torgensen?
Aye.
Mr. Brenner?
Aye.
Mrs. Bertram?
Aye.
Mr. Allison?
Aye.
And I for myself.
Please don't go. There's lots of stuff to sign.